All right, I'll go ahead and call the regularly scheduled meeting for April 11th, 2017 of the Bristol, Virginia City Council to order. If you'll join me for a moment of silent prayer, please. Okay. If you'll please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Item number A, Mayor's Minute and Council Comments. Again, I'll remind everyone there are Board and Commission vacancies. You can find those on the website as well as a form to fill out if you're willing to serve on one of those. I believe it's the Housing and Redevelopment Authority Board as well as the Transportation Safety Commission that we have vacancies on, but you can look on the website and find out what those boards do as well as get an application if you're interested in serving. Anybody else comment? Okay. The next item before we get to the agenda is a mayoral proclamation in honor of National Library Week, and I will read the proclamation and present it to Ms. Amy Camani, who's from the Bristol Public Library, who's here this evening. So, "A proclamation to recognize National Library Week. Whereas libraries are not just about what we have for people, but what we do for and with people. Whereas libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions, and library workers and librarians fuel efforts to better their communities, campuses, and schools. Whereas librarians are organizers and information experts who for centuries have guided people to the best information resources, librarians provide more than facts, they provide the expertise and services that add meaning to those facts. Whereas librarians continue to fulfill their role in leveling the playing field for all who seek information and access to technologies, especially as our society is at a critical juncture regarding the changing information landscape and the skills needed to thrive in our digital world. Whereas libraries and librarians are looking beyond their traditional roles in providing more opportunities for community engagement and delivering new services that connect closely with patrons' needs. Whereas libraries and librarians open a world of possibilities through innovative steam programming, maker spaces, job-seeking resources, and the power of reading. Whereas libraries support democracy and effect social change through their commitment to provide equitable access to information for all library users regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. Whereas libraries work to serve all community members, including people of color, immigrants, people with disabilities, and the most vulnerable in our communities, offering services and educational resources that transform communities, open minds, and promote inclusion and diversity. Whereas libraries, librarians, library workers, and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor's proclaim National Library Week, April 9th through 15th, in Bristol, Tennessee, Virginia. They encourage all residents to visit the library this week and explore what's new at your library and engage with your librarian. Because of you and our experts in the library, libraries transform. This day, 11th of April, 2017, Bill Hartley, Mayor of Bristol, Virginia; Chad King, Mayor of Bristol, Tennessee."
Good afternoon, council members, and thank you so much to the Bristol, Virginia City Council for this recognition for National Library Week. Now more than ever, the amazing staff at our Bristol Public Library is working hard to follow our mission to expand minds and build community. Since July, staff in our Jones Creativity Center have logged over 1,800 teaching hours, helping our community members learn computer skills, how to write a resume, and how to conduct job searches, among many other things. We've also answered over 15,000 reference questions, held over 700 programs for over 11,000 people, and circulated close to 190,000 items. We also have added a 3D printer, which is available for the public to use. During this National Library Week, we have many events scheduled at the library to help us celebrate. On Saturday, we are having the kids meet us at Steel Creek Park to have Go Fly a Kite Day, and that's Saturday at 10:00 a.m. We also have a genealogy class scheduled for Thursday and a 3D printer demonstration scheduled on Friday, and this is in addition to many other events for patrons of all ages. The Bristol Public Library belongs to this community. I'm proud to be a part of it and all that we have going on. Even beyond National Library Week, there's always something going on at the library, something to learn, to see, or do, and we encourage everyone in this community to come join us at the Bristol Public Library and enjoy what we have to offer. Again, thank you very much to the council for this proclamation, and we greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. We appreciate all the library does for our community. Okay. Regular agenda. Item number one, consider a resolution requesting that the Virginia Department of Transportation add identified streets or segments to the urban highway system of the city of Bristol, Virginia, and to revise mileage for streets currently in the city's urban highway system for municipality maintenance payments. The staff report, I believe that is... Mr. McCollum?
Okay. I don't know if you recall, back in January, we made this presentation to you before, and it's basically the same list. We had accepted, some of them had been taken off. We reviewed it with the local VDOT office, the local VDOT staff, and everything was good as far as they were concerned. Richmond reviewed it and then removed some of them, and so the reduction went from 9.35 lane miles to 7.91 lane miles. We still expect to get about 96,000 additional to our maintenance budget. The ones that they removed, there's some criteria that's a little bit convoluted and difficult to understand, and so even the local guys don't understand it that well. So, we're going to pursue some of the ones that they took off next go around, too. Next year, we'll pursue those again, trying to get those clarified, to get those added back in. It all depends on right-of-way width and the width of the actual pavement as to whether or not they'll accept maintenance, and then also when it was accepted in the city, it's a bunch of different criteria, and so we'll try to get a better feel for that and try to get those added back in next time. Do y'all have any questions for me?
Okay. Have any public comment? I don't... Does she? No. No one signed up, although anyone speak? Okay. This time, I will read the resolution. "Resolution of the City Council of the City of Bristol, Virginia, requesting that the Virginia Department of Transportation add certain streets or segments to the city's urban highway system and to revise mileage for streets currently in the city's urban highway system for municipality maintenance payments. Whereas Section 33.2-319 of the Code of Virginia is amended, authorizes payments to cities and towns for the maintenance of certain highways, and whereas the Virginia Department of Transportation has established procedures for the addition of certain streets for the purpose of maintenance payments, and whereas the city of Bristol has accepted 7.91 lane miles of streets or street segments identified on the attached Form U-1 into the city's system of highways for the purpose of maintenance. Whereas the city of Bristol has performed an audit of the streets currently in the city's urban highway system for municipality maintenance payments, and has identified those streets that require revisions to the official street mileage for municipal maintenance payments on the attached street audit report. And now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Bristol, Virginia, meeting in regular session this 11th day of April, 2017, petitions the Virginia Department of Transportation add those streets identified on the attached Form U-1 to the urban highway system and to revise the mileage for the streets on the attached audit report currently in the city's urban highway system of the city of Bristol for municipal maintenance payments." All right. Do I have a motion?
Moved to accept the resolution requesting that the Virginia Department of Transportation add identified streets or segments to our urban highway system of the city of Bristol, Virginia.
Have a second?
Second.
All right. We have a motion vice Mayor Hubbard, second Councilman Mumpower. Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Leener.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Consider first reading of an ordinance conveying lots 20 and 22 as described on a plat entitled "Plat of Lots 20, 21, 22, and 23, the Falls, Phase 2, to the Industrial Development Authority of Bristol, Virginia." Mr. Reed?
Yes. Counsel, this is in regards to two lots within the Falls development, it's lots 20 and 22. At this time, we... These lots were purchased several years ago, and it's time to move those lots over out of the city's name to the IDA, so they may be transferred over to new property owners. We have... Council approved a plat at the last meeting for these lots, and I would recommend that the council approve the first reading of the attached ordinance.
All right. I don't think anyone signed up, but do we have any public that want to comment? Do I have a motion to consider first reading of the ordinance?
So moved.
I'll second that.
All right. I have a motion, Councilman Mumpower, second, Councilman Wingard. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Leener.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
"Ordinance to convey lots 20 and 22 as described on a plat entitled 'Plat of Lots 20, 21, 22, and 23, the Falls, Phase 2, to the Industrial Development Authority of Bristol, Virginia. Whereas the city of Bristol, Virginia, hereafter the city, acquired a number of parcels of land located on Lee Highway near Exit 5 of Interstate 81 in the city of Bristol, Virginia, and whereas the city has partnered with the Industrial Development Authority of Bristol, Virginia, and Interstate Development Partners LLC through a development agreement for the development of a retail shopping center commonly referred to as the Falls. And whereas the city has caused a portion of the property to be subdivided as shown on a plat entitled 'Plat of Lots 20, 21, 22, and 23, the Falls, Phase 2, which will be recorded in the office of the clerk of the Circuit Court for the city of Bristol, Virginia prior to the transfer of any lots located therein. And whereas the city wishes to transfer to the Industrial Development Authority of Bristol, Virginia, hereafter the IDA lots 20 and 22 as described on the aforementioned plot... plant, excuse me. And whereas pursuant to Section 14.01 of the Charter of the City of Bristol, Virginia, the city expressly waives advertisement and other requirements because this is a transfer of property to be used for economic development. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council for the city of Bristol, Virginia, that the city shall transfer to the Industrial Development Authority of Bristol, Virginia, lots 20 and 22 of that property, as will be more particularly described on a survey entitled 'Plat of Lots 20, 21, 22, and 23, the Falls, Phase 2, to be recorded in the office of the clerk of the Circuit Court for the city of Bristol, Virginia prior to the transfer of any lots located therein, and be it further ordained that the city requests the Industrial Development Authority of Bristol, Virginia, accept the property and transfer it to Interstate Development Partners LLC in accord with the party's development agreement at such time as it is determined at the discretion of the IDA and Interstate." Item number three, consider health insurance rates. Ms. Crowder?
Currently, we're getting a local choice health plan that is in conjunction with the school system. That's a pool plan that's offered by the state for local governments, and as we have done our locality comparisons for other items involving departments, we took a look at what other localities are offering for health insurance. What we found was that the vast majority of government administrations are offering a 500 deductible plan and/or 1,000 deductible plan, and so as we looked at our claim costs, which increased 5%, to adjust the budget of what we have for health insurance right now by 5% would be an additional $25,000 increase. We then evaluated two options for the insurance. The first was to... The current plans we have are a 250 single deductible referred to as the Key Advantage 250, and then a Key Advantage 1,000, which is the $1,000 single person deductible. We evaluated keeping those plans with the city only funding what is required by the plan for a single subscriber, which would be an increase to the city of 24,000. However, the employees would be paying higher premiums. The second option we looked at was to change from the Key Advantage 250 to a Key Advantage 500 plan, meaning for a single subscriber, the deductible would change from 250 to 500. I'll remind you who were on council, and then inform those of you who weren't, last year, we did move from a 500 to a 1,000. So, this was the first year we had the 500 and 1,000 plans, so to make this switch from 250 to 500 is a natural progression of what we started last year. What we're showing there is that a minimum, there's going to be an annual savings of $350 to the city. You know, it depends on how the sign-ups go for that, but also, we have tried to pass along some of those savings to the subscriber, and you see that in the premium sheet. And so tonight, we are asking for your all's to feed back on these rates, as we need to start them for open enrollment for the employees. And with that, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Did you say $350 or $3,500?
$3,500.
Okay. I only have one here. I missed it.
Yes. $3,500.
Okay. Yeah, at this time, any public comment? Thank you, buddy. Signed up, but public comment? Okay. This time, I'll entertain...
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Warren?
I'm Melissa Warren. I'm with the Bristol, Virginia Public School System. I live at 21148 Battle Hill Drive. I have looked at these insurance plans, and the school system is automatically going to be pulled into this, correct?
Not necessarily. I mean, we could break apart if...
Which then...
Right.
Okay. So, one thing you didn't mention is that it's not just the deductible that changes, it's everything within the policy. So, your deductible goes up, you go from co-pays to 20% charges, you go from... There's...
The out-of-pocket is more.
There's a lot of out-of-pocket charges for that, and in the school system, we are absorbing... The employee is paying the difference that for the $250 plan, it's not costing the city or the school system any money. Is that not an option that can be done with city employees? I mean, I have to pay the difference in order to have that $250 plan.
That would be option one, because we have to cover 80... You all... I know the CFO and HR director can correct me if I get this wrong, but we have to cover 80% of the single coverage, average cost. The city has to cover that, as does the schools. So, to do that would be the option one, which was the additional 24,000.
Okay. The only change I could see, the only difference between the 500 and the $1,000 plan in what I downloaded off their website, is that $500 to $1,000. Everything else within there is exactly the same, so really, you might as well go with the $1,000 plan and pay less, and you're going to actually come out ahead financially in the long run, so what's the point of even having a $500 plan? That's my take on it, because I did the math, and it doesn't really come out to be any difference. So, who's going to take the 5... I wouldn't take the $500 plan if it was offered, because I'm going to have to pay more per month, and if I... That's what I'm saying. Does that make sense?
Yeah. That's what insurance companies are encouraging people to do, take a little better care of yourself and make money, because you won't have to pay premiums from day one. I mean, 250 is... I don't know how many years ago that disappeared from the private sector, other than the huge corporations, they've had those Cadillac plans forever, but you're right, there's not a whole lot of difference. Personally, I always took the gamble, but that's just me, but that's... You're right about that analysis. But the school doesn't have to go along with our plan. If they want to break off and go into their own, that's fine. I mean, if they're not bound.
Well, if I may...
Did you have a... Go ahead, Ms. Reed.
If I may add that, you know, for the city employees, for the 250 plan right now, we're paying 7250 per pay period for that single $250 plan, and then it would go down to $63 per pay period. And of course, I believe the school system pays a little differently toward their employees' premium than does the city, so, you know, that's some differences. We don't know what the schools may do with that percentage right now. But you're right. I mean, the plans themselves, they are similar. You know, there is a $250 deductible difference, and then the out-of-pocket, I believe, is about $1,000 difference. But it is a cost savings to the city, and it's a cost savings per month for the employee.
So, what's the drop dead date on the open enrollment, when the approval of which plans are offered has to be completed?
Oh, the open enrollment, we have set that from April 17th to May 5th. The TLC says that we have to have everything in their hands by May 12th, I believe. All the enrollments have to be completed, certified by us, and they will be able to do a mass change if everybody goes from a 250 to a 500, but if someone wants to go from a... The 500 to a 1,000, or the 1,000 back to the 500, we have to do enrollment forms for those.
Okay, so that's what's driving... There has to be a decision tonight on which plans to offer.
Yes, we are in a time crunch.
They always like to wait to the last minute to send out these rates, too, so that you will...
Yeah, it's...
Hurry up and do something. It's kind of a poor way of doing business, but that's the way they all have done it.
Did you check other municipalities? Wasn't there some information on what's offered around us? Can you expand on that a little bit?
Right. I mean, we looked at, from a government administration standpoint, looking at the counties as well as city galaks. The only other entity that offered the 250 plan from a governmental administration standpoint was Washington County. Everybody else had 500 and/or 1,000. Some people only offered one plan, but those that offered two, again with the exception of us in Washington County, were 500 and 1,000.
Has Washington County voted on this year's change?
They have, yeah.
And they approve the 250?
Yes, didn't they?
I just know that's what their plans are for. I don't know if they've actually approved.
I'm just curious. But you know, it's unfortunate. I'll just say, you know, the healthcare market is not good to anybody, and it's been moving this direction for a long time, and private industry, I mean, we would love to have a plan like this, actually. The day, probably 10 years ago, we had plans like this. It's just, it's gotten that bad, and so, you know, the market's telling everybody, the message is preventive care and being healthy is the answer. You have got to really, really take care of yourself.
And so, public employees be glad you're getting what you're getting, because realistically, I don't know how, if you're appreciative or not of that fact, but you know, if you're an individual in a home and you have to pay it for yourself, it's about $1,200 a month, okay? So, you know, take what you... Be glad you get what you get, and be appreciative of that fact.
And I think you do have to offer two plans. I mean, there are employees that have a foreseen, you know, issue that they know they're going to have to do this year, and so having a 500 versus 1,000 premium makes a difference to some who know they're going to have to do something medically, so that'd be a reason to have a 500 plan, once the question was asked, but...
I think the time's coming where the public employee's going to be paying just like the private citizens are. I think that day's right around the corner, and that's... I can't wait to hear the complaining then from people. Oh, my God, we got to come out of our whole pocket. That's just... There's a big difference in working for the government, working out here, paying the taxes and so forth, paying for people that work for the government. And, you know, it's kind of scary that people don't appreciate what they get.
I mean, it's unfortunate, but it's not a... It's not something that we can really fix unless we just all become healthy.
Speaking to that point, I know some insurance companies offer, for example, if you're willing to go through, do some biometric screening and answer some questions and some coaching and things like that, that they'll give you a discount, or discounts for, you know, gym memberships or stuff like that, because they're trying to move in the direction, as Councilman Mumpower said, towards healthier lifestyles. Is that... Are there options in this plan for things like that?
Well, under the Affordable Healthcare Act, of course, the preventative maintenance visits don't cost anything extra for the employee to go and do, and there is a segment of the local choice called Common Health Wellness, and so there are certain things that employees have access to through Common Health Wellness. Plus, there's an employee assistance program that helps with a lot of issues, including mental health, or if somebody's going through a divorce or having financial difficulty. So, there's a lot of extra benefits in addition to dental and vision that's involved in this, so, yes, to answer your question.
Okay. Well, I was just thinking, when I worked for ETSU for State of Tennessee, they had a thing that if you filled out a questionnaire and agreed to, you know, have a health coach call you if you had issues or something, that it would reduce your premium just by agreeing to that, which to me, you know, things that would... Could help potentially save people money and promote, and from their point of view, it promoted wellness. So, that's what, I didn't know if there was anything like that with this kind of plan.
That would be a, a separate decision.
Yeah. Any, any more questions anybody has?
Uh, yeah. Um, if I understand this right, we can switch, go to a five hundred thousand plan and save thirty-five hundred dollars a year.
Minimum.
Minimum.
We're at...
What's, say that again?
Minimum, thirty-five hundred.
Minimum, minimum, okay. And we all know, I mean, insurance, healthcare in this country is at a crossroads and has been for a long time now. And, uh... But, uh, with the, the finances that the city is looking at, and, uh, things that we're going to have to, uh, look at, you know, to cut the budget and save money everywhere we can, uh... I know it's unfortunate, you know, that premiums have to go up, but everything goes up. And, uh, there's nothing we can do about that. Everything's out of our control, and everybody has to deal with it in their households. And, uh, I'm of the mindset that, you know, a five hundred to a thousand is a fabulous plan in this country today. I mean, that, and I don't see how anybody could, uh, you know, get too upset for having a five hundred or a thousand dollar out-of-pocket expense. And, uh, I was actually surprised when I asked the question in the meeting if there was other policies that went even higher to that, and I was told no. And, uh, I mean...
Except for the high deductible. There's a high deductible plan, but...
Yes, yes. I mean, you know, it's, it's not uncommon today to have six, eight, ten thousand dollar out-of-pocket expenses on your deductibles.
Mine's five thousand.
Mine's six.
Okay.
Six thousand.
Oh, he was asking about the high deductible plan. It's like fifty-six hundred deductible or something. It's a really high...
It doesn't make any sense to me that the people that are paying, the private sector that's paying for the public, that gets a better plan than the, than the people that are paying the freight. And that is, to me, extremely troubling, and it's going to, it's, at some point in time, it's going to, it's going to, it's going to be...
It's going to collapse.
It's going to collapse, because the private people that are working, trying to make ends meet, paying their real estate taxes and so forth for public employees, and I'm talking about the whole spectrum when I say public employees, they're, they're, they're way overpaid, and they're way overbenefited. And you put them together, in my opinion, something's got to change. Something's got to change, Mr. Wingard. And I'm going to ask one question. If everyone in the city on this, on this, on the health insurance plans, if it was certified, they did, no one smoked, no one used tobacco of any kind, no one drank, and no one was obese or overweight, and so forth and so on, and that could be certified with that? Have you, has ever, had it ever been looked into, like, the percentage that are actually healthy and so forth? Would that decline the insurance cost?
Well, since the local choice is in a pool, and, uh, with their rates coming in at five percent, I think a lot of people would be in bias of the rate that we actually got on the increase. So, I feel like, for the most part, our employees are doing pretty good. Uh, because over the years, um, there was a lot of usage, like, at the emergency room, maybe for non-emergency visits. And so, through education and proponents and more availability and accessibility of urgent cares, people have reduced going to those emergency rooms, which has helped reduce costs. And, you know, I'm just going to go on a limb and say here, there is nothing that if an employee never used the insurance and never had a sickness, or never used it at all, there is no controlling the healthcare, medical cost, and there's no controlling the hel- the insurance companies. So, you know, everybody's in a vice, and it's just unfortunate for everybody. But, um, I'm pretty proud of the way that our healthcare is managed, and at the rates that we are able to get, and that we are able to make decisions that balance saving the city money and still providing a benefit to those employees.
I would add too, that as we did the locality comparison, uh, one of the things that we did find was that some jurisdictions are doing the, the nonsmoker and charging, uh, a premium if you, you know, so you, they're doing it two different ways, uh, Councilman Flair, where maybe you get charged an extra little bit if you do smoke, or maybe you get charged less if you don't. Uh, also, some localities have a spousal surcharge, where if your spouse can get insurance somewhere else and they are not, that you pay more. And so, those are things that through this coming year, we can look at as we've discovered what other people are looking at. And these are people in local choice, so we know these are things that, uh, if done correctly, can be done, so...
When you say, when you use the word pool, though, we're talking on a lot of different localities and so forth and government units, correct?
Oh, so...
A whole state.
Yes.
And so, we're not penalized if there's a catastrophic illness necessarily in our particular jurisdiction, so...
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Right. And then some things that you offer to try to increase, you know, the healthiness of employees, you would have to all, counteroffer to those that do have tobacco use, some program, so that you're not discriminating, because sometimes, depending on what you're doing, it can be some unintentional discrimination in there.
So, I'll throw out two other things that we've done in the private sector. One is the smoking cessation program. So, we do that. We test people. If they don't smoke, then they do get a lower, you know, premium cost per month. The other thing is, uh, we established a medical clinic and basically hired our own nursing and doctor staff, which ended up saving a lot of money, because it keeps people from going to the doctor for just anything, so they can bring anyone there and do the normal stuff they do, the doctor's office prescriptions too. And it, it's saved a tremendous amount of money. You'd be surprised. And so, that's a, that's something to look at. I think we got to get creative in this healthcare environment. And, um, you know, the next step is maybe to have partnerships between several entities that share the cost of a medical clinic, you know, that...
Beautiful.
You know what I'm saying? So, you got maybe three organizations that's got a thousand employees, and you all share the cost, and you establish that medical clinic, and then it ends up being a win-win for everybody, so...
Bristol, Tennessee has already done something like that, have they not?
They have, yes.
BVU, BVU has a nurse on site, I think, do they not, Phil?
For now, yes.
For now, yes.
So, there's a health insurance premium the employer pays, plus they pay the salary and medicines and medical salaries. Is that...
Well, there's several ways to promote good health, and that is, we pay a certain percent if you're on our health plan, or you pay a higher percent if you want to go your own way and not abide by our health plan. So, you can control it by what amount of premium you're willing to pay for the employee. Even if there's no law to cover it, you can make your own lawsuit, and all right, we pay eighty percent for all the people that are on our health plan. You create the health plan. If you're not, don't want to fool with it, fine, you had to, we're only going to pay seventy percent.
I mean, realistically, we could, as a governmental unit, we could say, they're responsible for their own health insurance, public employees.
Well, I mean, yes.
There's nothing that says that we have to fund this, period. I mean, there's no requirement that we do this.
Hopefully, we don't ever get to that point.
I mean, it ends up being that you're, you're competing for employees in the marketplace, so depending on what benefits you offer, it can influence somebody's decision on where they work and how long they stay. That's what you're really up against, but, uh...
Just call for the motion. Any other... All right. Uh, this time, we'll entertain a motion?
I move that we, uh, task the city manager to, uh, implement the five hundred and one thousand dollar plans and work out whatever details are necessary in order to implement that. And I'll second that.
Okay. I have a motion by Vice Mayor Hubbard and a second by Councilman Wingard. Any, uh, additional council discussion?
All right, Clerk, call the roll.
Flainer.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes. Item number four, consent agenda.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would like to withdraw item number four point two.
Okay.
To consider it separately.
Okay. We can do that?
Uh, I wasn't, you've got all these dates listed here for the meetings. I wasn't here last meeting, so how do we do that? Do you, we have...
We'll have to do those individually, because I, I wasn't here a couple of these too, so we'll have to approve these individually.
So, we want to... What would you, uh...
Can we just say, I'll, I'll put this one? We hope to get this all with this...
No, which, which one do you need to pull out?
Uh, uh, March twenty-eighth for me.
Okay.
Which one do you need to do that, sir?
Six and the thirteenth.
Which one?
Six and the thirteenth.
You weren't at...
He wasn't there either.
You weren't there either.
I wasn't there.
At one of them.
No, okay. So, okay, I didn't know we...
I'll add those two to my motion.
Okay, okay.
Handle separately.
So, all right, so...
Have a second.
Second. Did you make the motion?
Clear on the motion.
The motion is to remove four point two from the consent agenda, also remove joint call meeting for March thirteenth, two thousand and sixteen, and regular call, regular meeting for March twenty-eighth, two thousand and seventeen.
And joint call meeting.
All three to be handled separately.
March sixth, thirteenth, and twenty-eighth.
Oh, March sixth, all right, my bad. It sounds like we've broken the same...
Why don't we do this one separate? And then we'll talk about this one separate.
Let's, yeah. You want to do that? Just do all the minutes separate?
Yeah, what the heck?
So, you basically have no consent agenda, right, is what we're seeing?
Well...
Yeah, kinda.
Well, we have, I think on the, we can leave on the consent agenda...
Look, there's no consent. There's a problem.
Yeah, it's not. We will, we, we'll leave on the consent agenda.
Let's just do more than the time get over.
Okay.
Exactly.
So then, okay. So, let's then, uh, move to item four point one, consider approval of the minutes. Uh, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of February twenty-eighth?
So moved, second.
I was going to say, and the regular meeting of March fourteenth, I think.
Oh, you're trying to save time, okay.
Yeah, save a little bit of time.
Yes.
Okay.
Second to those two, to that motion.
So, we have a motion, um, Vice Mayor Hubbard, and a second by Councilman Flainer, to approve the minutes of the regular meetings from Mar- uh, February twenty-eighth and March fourteenth.
Yes.
Clerk, call the roll.
Flainer.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes. Okay, now, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the joint call meeting of March sixth and the joint call meeting of March thirteenth?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, motion...
Second.
Councilman Wingard, a second by Vice Mayor Hubbard, to approve the minutes of the joint call meetings of March sixth and March fourteenth. Clerk, call the roll.
Flainer.
Uh, abstain, yeah.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Abstain.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes. Okay, now, do I have, um, a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of March twenty-eighth, two thousand and seventeen?
I move we approve March twenty-eighth many minutes.
Okay, motion, Councilman Mumpower?
Second.
Second by Councilman Wingard. Clerk, please call the roll.
Flainer.
Abstain.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes. Okay, now, we will, um, do item four point two. Consider a street closure request for Quaker Steak and Louvre Bike Nights, May fourth, June first, July sixth, August third, September seventh, and October fif- twenty seventeen. And we do have, uh, one individual...
Yes, due to previous discussions about the street closure issue, uh, we have a plan in the wor- in the works to charge some type of minimal fee for more than one street closure in a year. Uh, so, at this point, uh, I make a motion that we allow May four and June first, street closures to take place. The others be put off until after July, because it's, hopefully, we'll have a fee structure in place for the new year.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. We did have one individual, um, sign up, comment, um, Mr. Brad Smith. You go, okay. All right, any, uh, discussion? All right, so we have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Flainer.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes. Okay, and now, item four point three, consider a street closure request for Creative Learning Center, Carnival, May eleventh, two thousand and seventeen, with a rain date of May fifteenth, two thousand and seventeen.
So moved.
Okay. Motion by Vice Mayor Hubbard.
Second.
Second by Councilman Flainer. Any discussion? All right, Clerk, call the roll.
Flainer.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes, okay.
It was kind of consensual, wasn't it? Very close.
So, now we move to, uh, the council discussion, item number B, Budget Calendar for Fiscal Year Eighteen. And I believe that would be, uh, Ms. Crowder?
Hopefully, at your seat, you have blue piece of paper. Uh, that is what we have... Let me turn my mic on. Uh, at your seat, you have blue piece of paper. That is a tentative, uh, budget calendar. As you know, this is a discussion item, and so, if you skip to the middle of the page, you'll see that, uh, recommended budget presentation. We are working diligently. I am very happy to have our new CFO here with us tonight. Uh, Tamara's been on the jo- Mrs. Bradlin, excuse me, has been on the job for about a week, and so she has had to dive right in. Uh, we are working diligently to have that recommended budget presentation as close to, uh, ready for you all on April twenty-fifth as possible. So, then, we start, I'm going to skip to the bottom and working backwards, because, um, if you have a calendar and look at it, um, our last meeting of June falls on June twenty-seventh, and so, what we are suggesting is that we would do a second reading and adoption of budget at a called meeting on June twentieth, and that would give us some time, if need be, to make adjustments prior to the end of the year, because hopefully, you all know by, uh, charter, we have to have a budget in place July one. So, we would have a meeting going backwards again, June thirteenth is our regular meeting, so you have an opportunity to do some discussion there if need be. First reading at a called meeting on June sixth, with public hearing at the regular meeting on May twenty-third. A budget workshop could be held the we- week of May fifteenth. That, we've thrown that out as a tentative. Certainly, we're welcome, we are happy to have whatever workshops you all want to have. Uh, really wanted you all to have some discussion with your calendars, so tonight, hopefully, we can set some dates and get them on everybody's calendars. The outside agency presentation that we typically have, uh, we're suggesting would be May ninth. That's where the, we give people an opportunity here requesting funding to come in and state their case to you all. Um, you'll see that, uh, well, I'm going to quit talking. So, that is the calendar we proposed. It has one public meeting, which is the required public hearing. But as you all know, at our typical meetings, we do have public comments. So, beyond that, I mean, we're happy to do, again, what you all would like. So, with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mayor.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
And it really, it's more, it's more directed, this is something I, when it comes to the budget, that I, I don't know, I missed it, maybe missed it in the packages we've had, but I'd like to know, Ms. Bradlin, how much debt is on still, um, Clear Creek Golf Course? The golf course, it's some, I'd like to know that specifically, once we get into this, please, ma'am, and the de- and indebtedness, including bonds and so forth. And I, I'm sure that, I think there is some, and also, what our indebtedness is as far as the, um, um, what's it?
Landfield.
Landfield, fine, landfill, landfill, yes. Those two specific issues, what I'd like to know about. I thank you very much for that.
Unfortunately, it looks like I can make all these meetings.
These are all six P M. in the evening meetings, is that...
Well, and, and that's, I guess, what we need to discuss, is how, you know, um, looking back, it looks like from, um, two weeks from now, on the twenty-fifth, the city manager will come and present a budget, and at that point, we start this process. And we need to do as much work as we can and be as diligent as we possibly can over the next month. Looks like the next four weeks, between that and a public hearing, to do our work, to get the budget to as, as best a shape as we can then present to the public and, and have a public hearing. Not to say that we can't, uh, have opportunities for the public to be present, or even to hear back from the public. I know, I think, two years ago, we had a, a workshop up at the high school ahead of the public hearing, um, uh, to, to get... uh, to get... Yeah, town hall type meeting. We can do that, we can have these meetings, uh, whenever. I guess the point is, you know, would we be better served to have an all-day meeting, one day, to really sit down and look at things? Or would you rather have a series of meetings at, at six? But, you know, if you have all day, then, you know, you can get a lot of work done in one day versus a whole lot of little meetings at night, it's gonna take up a lot of time.
Traditionally, the budget workshop is the one that's an all-day affair.
Yeah.
And we talk to all the heads of the city departments and what have.
And, and it may be that we have a combination. I know that, that, um, council members have, have expressed a desire to really sit down a- and look at things, and so to do that is going to take some time. And I guess the thing is, we need to figure out how much time and, and when, and, and kinda get that laid out, uh, both for the benefit of, of the public that's here, so they can know, and, and the citizens that wanna be able to, to come, uh, can, as well as the benefit of ourselves, uh, because we have, uh, you know, looking ahead, uh, you know, things with our employers and, and different things to make sure that if it is an all-day thing or even an afternoon, it may be a couple of things, take a couple of afternoons to the all-day. But, you know, to make sure that we know that as, uh, far ahead of time, so that we can schedule our time. And that's really what this item for discussion is about, so, uh, I will entertain any thoughts anyone has.
Well, it's my opinion, before we get too far into the budget, we need to know the condition of the city's finances, what was projected last year, but where we actually ended up. We need to know if we had shortfalls, did we meet our expectations? Or have we lost so many businesses and jobs that we're, we're behind? So before we go into...
We also need to know what kinda funding we're gonna get from the state, too.
I think that's where the recommendations for the budget presentation, that's where all that stuff will come out.
Okay, but, okay. And along with that recommendation of the budget, we're gonna get the current financial situation that the city is in right now, and we're gonna be given the request from the departments, so...
Usually the requests from the departments, we go o- we go over at the workshop when the departments come. I'm happy to give you, I can give you the budget we first built that had the requests in it, and then I can, I can give you what I'm presenting that night, uh, as far as the financials. You know, we are, as I said, Ms. Bradlin's been on the job a week, um, so we are working hard to, to get those called up, but in addition to working on the budget, um, you know, we... I'm, I'm not gonna speak for you. Can we have the, I guess, we can have some form of current financials on April twenty fifth for them, yes.
Okay, and before we get too far, too much further into it, I know that there's been several councilmen that have requested or made comments about they wanted to see line items on these departments, and I haven't seen any yet.
You know, I asked, I've asked last meeting before last, I said, I, you know, I don't just wanna see, you know, overall picture of an apartment. I wanna see individual...
Line items.
A line item of every employee of the city, benefits, what they get paid, benefits and so forth and so on. I know that may be more of a hindrance and so forth than it typically would be, but I think we need to actually see who's getting what for what.
And, and what's being spent where.
That's right.
So that document alone is gonna take a while to generate, so I'm requesting it again now before we get into any closer to these dates.
So you want it too, Mr. Wingard?
Absolutely, I want it.
I, I don't see the, the per employee, what is that gonna help anything?
Well, you know, I think, I think...
Unless you work with that employee, how do you know they're worth whatever it is?
I think, in the first place, it's public information.
Well, I'm not saying we shouldn't have it, I'm just saying that...
And I wanna know...
What can we do with...
Well, what can we do with it? We can basically show the people, this is how much we're spending in the city. I mean, people...
Well, that's showing.
Well, not just the big overall picture.
Well, the financial statement has it broken down into what they spend for supplies, what they spend for this, that, and the other, so the salary is lumped together on one line.
I want salaries individual. And the bennies.
The, I am, and I'll ask Mr. Reeves this, um, because I, when you get down to that with smaller departments where there's a handful of people, I wonder if that, if there's, could put you at some kinda legal risk, because even though you, you may have employee A, it's, it's not hard to figure out who those employees are, and if that would put us, if, if we're looking at things at that level of detail, which traditionally, I don't think that the council has looked at that level of detail, it's more at a department level. Does that open us up to any potential legal risk?
Well, I thi- I think Mr. Flainer's correct in the fact that, you know, anybody's salary with the city would be foiable. Uh, so if someone wanted to know person X's salary, they could easily foil that information. You know, so legally, I don't think there's anything that would put the city at any issue. Uh, you know, it's just the, the personal matter of when you can narrow it down. Some employees may not like it, but that's part of being a city employee, public employee.
Let me ask Ms. Bradlin, that information should be really fairly easy for you to put together. I mean, I would think, so it's not like it's, other than getting it from, you know, what, familiarizing yourself with it and putting it down, it should be pretty easy to break that down without a lot of more work on you, would you agree with that?
The only thing that I would, I would encourage is if we could just some way, um, not identify each individual employee within the budget.
That's smart.
You know, just so that it's not within a budget document, um, you know, maybe a sign-up by employee ID number or something to that effect, uh, just...
I think titles might be, I mean, I think you could put titles or something like that, or you could do a, uh, a hierarchy of...
That would be identifiable, though.
Well, I, I, school budget would also, school system employees would also come into this since the city funds it, is that correct, Ms. Reeves?
I don't know why they wouldn't.
There's only certain positions, though, that the city funds, not all positions.
I think people need to see that, too.
And if you'll give me a week just to make sure that we cover all the bases in regards before that's published, but at the moment, I don't see why that would be an issue legally for us.
We would, we would have to request that information from the schools, just so you all know, because we fund them as a lump sum, and they'll, they'll, they request.
That's not our deci- that's, that's why we elect the school board, that's their decision i- in terms of those...
How funded is it?
Well, but, I mean, they get funding from us that comes, I mean, when you look at the budget, it's literally one line that says transfer to school system as far as the individual salaries, and how they allocate that money is not a, a city council decision, that's a school board decision. And again, that's why they, they have their own separate board and separate meetings and stuff.
Like Mr. Reeves said, though, you can get that if you need to get that at some point in time, if you really wanna get that, it's not like you said...
Yeah, it's, it's for you, too.
But, but City of Bristol is a separate issue, I mean, we have that control, and...
As I said, give me, you know, a few days and let me just double-check everything, make sure we're not violating anything, but off the top of my head, I don't see any reason as why that couldn't be done.
Okay.
You might wanna start working on it, though.
So, I guess, look, let's, there's an understanding here of what we want in, in two weeks or to begin this process, of the information to start, that, that, I think, or...
Yeah, we have all the info by the budget workshop.
I think, is everybody, anything else that you, you wanna require? I mean, 'cause we'll start there, but then, now, we have to start looking at, we've got this information, and we get it two weeks from now on a Tuesday night, it's gonna take a little while to process, how are, when are we gonna meet and sit down?
That's what we've gotta figure out. We're gonna have to slot some serious times of this budget.
But before we get to, to that, I just wanna make sure that anything that we need in two weeks that you, you would like to request, you've, you've made that request.
And I, and one more thing, is there any way we're gonna be able to get the actual receipts from Commissioner Revenue, what we've actually generated and so forth? Obviously, we need to have access to that information, just number one, Matt. And then the Commissioner Revenue, ain't that the person we get ours, that, that, we, that know how much receipts we've had in the city and so forth? Am I wrong, wrong or right about that, Ms. Crowder? If I'm missing it?
I think the Treasurer transfers the money to it.
Whoever, whoever gets the sales tax information from the restaurants and so forth, we need to have that information to match up, somehow, we need to match up the projections we had for this year versus what we were, we projected and so forth, and actual money's coming in and so forth. Now, who do we get that information from?
We work with the Commissioner on that.
Of revenue?
I can tell you, right?
Okay, I was...
That we have, uh, he can't give us individual businesses, though. I mean, he can give aggregate businesses, um, by state confidentiality, okay? So, but we have been working with him, and you're gonna see next time that all of those revenues are trending down.
Down?
Yes, and so, um, that is, you know, part of that budget presentation that we go through, uh, where we talk about revenues and we talk about expenditures, and then we give you all basically a draft copy of the line items by department. You know, I, I would suggest, and it would be similar to what the bud- to what's posted online right now, the budget. I mean, it won't have all the front documents to start with, um, but when you get over to the department sections, you can see how the items are broken down, so if there's something you want to...
Yeah, I think the only addition is it's gonna be, instead of just salaries, it's gonna show a thing of employees and then all the other stuff, is what we've always presented.
And we're gonna have to deal with having, not having the revenue from outback next year, too, next fiscal year.
There, that is true, I mean, Ball, um, is, they had machine and tools tax, um, they stripped that building, so the machine and tools tax is no longer there. Ruby Tuesday's closed this year.
Sears.
The complete loss of...
Yeah, the whole mall.
The whole mall, yeah.
So, you know, there are, right, we're gonna have lots to talk about, uh, in two weeks in terms of where, where we are with the revenues and what we're trying to do with the expenditures to, because we want, we have to have a structurally balanced budget, uh, from a, a fiscal standpoint, we have to do that.
Let me ask you, I, I asked you this, and then we can discuss it. Do you think it, and you, this one was by, do you think it would be better to, to focus, for example, on expenditures first and then look at reven- I mean, kinda divide it up? As, as we look at this, to, to pick one area of, one side of the budget to, to start with?
We can do that, if we were gonna, I'm gonna answer, and then you can tell me, honestly tell me if you feel differently. Um, I, if we're gonna do that, I would suggest we start with the revenues because, uh, you know, you, you're gonna balance your expenditures to your revenues, uh, so that's something we can do, but I guess, you know, we're already talking about being crunched on time, so if we break it into, to two parts...
Or just do it all to kinda as a line proceed, okay? I was just, just thinking about how we, 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 we approach this.
I think next year, and hopefully I have a CFO at budget time, and all is well. You know, we could certainly start that model and do a, a presentation earlier with revenues and involve the Commissioner Revenue and the Treasurer, and I, I'd love to do that.
Yeah, okay, well, and I know, I know some things, this is, 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 it's been a little different than most years as well for some, some things, so, okay, with that said, then, uh, we'll, we'll have the information everyone requested, the staff will provide that, I guess, in two weeks.
But dates on workshops and public...
And so then, we have, um, if I look at my calendar, I, um, one, two, three, four weeks between when we get that information and when we have the public hearing. So, how much do we need to meet, how often? Like I said, is it, uh, a lot in the evenings? Is it some in the evenings, some maybe in the afternoons? Is it, do we just bite the bullet and find a day and take all day and sit down and, and, or, or some combination thereof? Uh, again, and, and then, once we know that, we need to, to, to really look at our calendars and pick those dates, uh, as well.
I would think May fifteenth is far enough in advance that you could set aside a one-day deal, get it over with, instead of stringing it out, 'cause it's gonna be strung out enough as it is. May fifteen, it may have to be May nineteen or whatever, but somewhere in that, that day or two of that particular target date, I know my schedule is open.
You know, I'm, I'm gonna, I, I should've said week of May eighth, is what I should've said. Uh, we would ask you all to look at doing a workshop if you decide to go that route the week of May eighth, and not the fifteenth.
What's the schedule's gonna be, guys?
I, I say that because we have to publish a budget ordinance, a, a budget ordinance which has a synopsis of the budget, and so that has to be publicized. And ideally, we would have a good understanding for a public hearing, uh, that week.
Are we gonna do it here? Are we gonna have it all done here, or are we gonna, we're gonna do it here, whenever we need?
Yeah, we, I mean, we can meet where, in some, I think one...
Traditionally, we've met at, uh, Sugar Hall at Wild on Miles for the budget workshop. Uh, we can do it here, we can do it there.
I just think it's always a good idea to move it around a little bit, that way you kinda, instead of having the same location, you're gonna have to do it multiple times, it'd be, you know...
We're gonna have to have room to, to have paper, a lot of paper, 'cause it's gonna be a lot of paper.
Understand.
Well, we can't have it May eighth, 'cause then we haven't heard the outside agency presentation.
Okay, and we, we can adjust that date if you want, I mean, this, this is, nothing's in stone here.
Well, I would...
Let me tell you my high-level view, and then you can settle on dates. I think you gotta start three nights a week, the first two weeks as a minimum, and then you can move to two nights a week to make sure we get through what we need to get through. So we gotta have like a Tuesday night, a Thursday night, maybe a Friday afternoon, but we gotta hit it hard early, give us two weeks with six meetings, make sure we're getting through what we need to, 'cause she's gonna have to have time to go away and get stuff, and then we can back off to one or two in the last couple of weeks. If we don't do that, we're gonna get in trouble not getting through what we need to get through, and then we'll be, uh, scrambling to figure it out, so I think that's my recommendation. The week of the, the week of the eighth is not good for me because I'm traveling, the week of the fifteenth is good, so I'll just put that out there, so I'm, I'm out three days that week of the eighth.
I just want all the material in our possession, in a timely manner, to where we have time to look at it at our leisure at home, and then when we come together, we'll know more about what we're looking at and know more about what we need to talk about.
So it's easy, and it's easy to get in the weeds on something like this budgeting process, right? But I think, I'll just say, going through this a lot, I think we got a really good CFO now on staff that...
I agree.
We need, she needs to look at it from her perspective, right? And say, from the CFO standpoint, here's the things that I see in the current year that's materially significant. She starts at the top line, and then she points out where the issues are, and then what needs to be looked at in more detail, and then she drills down below the cost line to do the same thing. So she, so we're not trying to figure out the obvious paths that are already there, 'cause she, she's able to do that and probably shed some light on things that it may take us a couple of meetings, you know, to figure out. So if she can just look at that and do, like any good CFO would do, saying, okay, here's what I see in this budget. We either revenue line is good, or we got a problem, and here's the problem, and here's how much it is, and here's what makes up that dollar amount, and then she breaks down the cost side the same way so that we quickly see what then we need to drill into at a, at a second and third level in more detail. You know, 'cause there's gonna be some cost items that may not have been brought up here that we need to drill down to more detail, and we won't know that till we see her analysis. And that's just my recommendation.
Yeah, she's, uh, obviously gonna play a critical role in this budget process.
Yep, I mean, she just tells what she thinks we ought to do and let it, let's go with that, let's go with that. So you make the decision, you tell us, and we'll vote for it, how's that sound?
No, no pressure.
No pressure.
Well, I think she knows she's gonna get challenged. I think she knows there's not gonna be a bunch of easy questions, but if, you know, if, if, if a CFO is worth her salt, and I think she is, she'll, she'll dig down into it, and she'll let us know where the problems are and what we should do. So, I mean, she's been a municipal government for a while, it's not like her first rodeo, right? So we need to leverage her experience and help us get there quicker rather than later, and then it gives us a couple of weeks to really digest, you know, what, what we really have in front of us that's really, really difficult decisions, because though, that's where the time needs to be spent, because we're gonna be debating, I know, several areas that's gonna be very tough, uh, and, and that's not gonna happen, you know, in one, one week, so, you know, that's just the way I see it, so...
All right, um, well, then, looking at the calendar.
Looking at the calendar.
Back to May fifteenth. Back to May fifteenth.
I'm good, I'm good with the week of the fifteenth.
Well, let's, if we get this on the twenty-fifth, then that'll give us, we'll say, starting the week of the first.
Yeah.
I mean, you hadn't heard the outside agency presentations.
But you can move that in tighter, right?
You can always adjust it, of course.
City manager could say those have to occur on the twenty-fifth April city council meeting, right?
Right.
Yep.
So. Yeah. And then we got everything we need to work the week of the first of.
Well, cause I.
Or we can have a called meeting on the twenty-seventh if you want, I mean, or whatever date you wanted to have.
It might be.
Twenty-seventh.
Depends on what all comes up that April twenty-fifth could put us into a four hour meeting.
No, no more of those.
Just if the budget's light, we can go ahead and put it in the twenty-fifth of the regular meeting, but if it's heavy, we may wanna do a special meeting.
It's different, him that got an hour.
Yeah, go over the whole budget in an hour and that's it, yeah.
These outside agencies, just, uh, if everybody's live streaming here and listening, these outside agencies, they've seen enough of these city council meetings over the last few months. They better, one, come prepared, they better do their homework, they better have a very quick and spot on presentation so we get to the crux of what they're after. And you should be able to do that in five or six slides professionally and move on. And if you, you've taken much more than that, it, it says a lot about how, how much you know your organization and how deep you've really done your homework. So, I would, I would suggest they all listen and be quick and specific and to the point. And we need to know why, we need to spend the money they're asking for and, and it better, it better smell mustard right off the bat.
And we have applications from the outside agencies that we're gonna share with you all. We can go ahead and give you those. I mean, you're welcome to stop by and get those anytime.
So, how many, how many agencies are there?
I don't have that list with me to know. Typically, we invite the mandated and the non-mandated. And so, right, I would think it's between ten and fifteen, but normally we have six or so, six or seven come, I think. Um, you know, I think you could, you've heard from a couple of those already, cause we've had those called joint meetings.
Well, if it's mandated, what, they need to present anything, we're, we're stuck, right? So, why waste the time of a presentation of something that we're stuck with by law? Makes no sense.
Some of them ask for a little bit more. Um, some, some of them like to come before you all and so we can certainly schedule that a different time.
Usually it's when they're wanting a little more money.
Well, let's, let's look at it this way then, um, we get everything on, since we don't know and we're assuming the twenty-fifth might be a busy meeting and we don't wanna stay long. We get everything then, let's start on May the first and we'll start with the outside agencies. And we're do, and we'll do those that night.
Well, can we at least tell the people that are mandated to keep it, limit their time?
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, that could be, uh, probably depending on our questions and stuff, a couple of hours.
And if they're asking for more money, make it pretty clear.
And so, we can start there.
It's your all's meet, so I can certainly ask them to keep the presentation. And typically, we do say, keep it between five and ten minutes. This is what we've said in the past.
I mean, you understand if it's mandated and they want more, why do they want more? You know, it shouldn't take long to, to, to say that, you know? Beyond members of city council, Mr. Mayor, members of city council, um, so and so and so and so, this is what I need this year. You gotta pay me X. That's by law, but we need five thousand more and this is why, and point that out, boom, boom, and thank you if you have any questions. The other ones, the non-mandated, I'm assuming that's like the chamber and things along those lines.
Right.
You know, they need.
There's several things, but the, right, the chamber is one of those.
Five to ten minutes would be satisfactory for them, besides asking questions. But they need to come with data. I think Mr. Mumpire's right. They need to come with some information about why they, how they need, why they need this money and how is it justified and so forth? And how is it translated into, you know, the benefit of the city of Bristol, Virginia financially as well as.
That's how they all do it.
Good.
Yeah.
Then it, but, but it don't need to be all week. I mean, they need some data.
And that's part of the application process, meaning like I say, you're gonna do those.
Yeah, that's a standard procedure.
What, can we agree on that?
Yeah.
May one with the outside agencies.
Can go with May one.
Cause that way, then, you know, you, we've heard from outside.
I'll have to readjust my empty schedule, but I can work it in.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock. I think we just adjusted it for you.
Okay, so we do that, then the next day is Tuesday, which should be a, a open day for most people since we don't have a council meeting. So, we can begin then, the second.
That's a Wednesday, right?
No, it's a Tuesday.
Oh, okay. We're gonna do it at six again? Or we're gonna do all day?
Well, it's, um.
Tuesday.
How, you know, what's the pleasure of council?
Monday, six P M, Tuesday.
I mean, like you were saying, do we, that's really the question. Do we meet like Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday? Six to, to, to eight or nine?
Two or three hours max, brief session.
And, or do we take some afternoons in there? Like you said, maybe a Friday afternoon? Do, do some then? I mean, you know, what works better with everybody's schedule? Or do, at some point, do we bite the bullet and take all day just to save some time?
Well, let's be real here.
Or two half days.
Or two, yeah.
Two, here's the thing, you've got children and you work, and I know you wanna spend time with your children. Mr. Mumpire works, he doesn't have children. Mr. Wingard, you work and you've got children, but they're older. You know, I don't, but I have, you know, sometimes I work and sometimes I don't, but, you know, I don't care. But I think to make everything safe, we need to do it at nighttime or evening. Would y'all agree?
I.
I, I'm with whatever the majority wants to do.
I mean, you know, like I say, it, all day works.
Evening?
It, it works. For me, if I know enough in advance.
You get enough advance notice, you can work out where you can have all day or.
I, yeah, that's, that's why we need to know this, cause if I have enough advance notice, I could take a day off of work. I mean, or, or two half days, but the point being, I need to know now. And, and even now, there's some things that I can't work around. That's why we had, and this. Mr. Mumpire mentioned he'll be out of town, some of that, so that, that's what we need to know.
Uh, I'm out of town the, um, tenth and the eleventh and I fly out late.
The street.
I would sugge, I mean, I've heard everybody's concerns about when to meet and how to meet, but there's gonna be a lot of things that are needed at those meetings. First, I would suggest probably having them here at city hall so you can get access to information quickly if it needed to be done. And then, um, I probably shouldn't say much, but the week of May first, I'm not gonna be in town. Uh, so I don't know really what my expertise would be for you all at a budget meeting anyway, but, um. Yeah, I would try to have those, maybe two half day meetings, because these are gonna be so intensive. After you get done working a day, you come here at six o'clock, you're gonna be tired, maybe not as sharp as you'd like to be and you may not wanna stay as long as you'd wanna stay. And if you could do two half days, I think it'd probably be beneficial for each of you all to do that.
Or just do a Saturday, guys.
Or Sa, yeah, or Saturday.
Saturday's always, I mean, you know.
I mean, it would be efficient if we had like a Monday, Tuesday, couple hours in the evening and then we had a Friday afternoon or a Thursday sometime where we had four hours, you know, more lengthy. So, in the first two days of the week, we can figure out what, you know, what really we gotta get finished by the end of the week. And then we have a long session that third day of the week, so we can pound through it and then move into the next week, so.
You wanna do that?
I would say like the fifth, five, one, you know, do a six to eight P M. Five, two, which is Tuesday, do like a six to eight P M. And then five, four, which is Thursday, do like an eight in the morning until noon or something like that.
On Thursday?
Yeah, on Thursday morning, give us a four hour long session, something like that.
And that's it?
And that's it for that week.
Okay.
That's a pretty, that's a pretty productive, but it's a, you know, it's a lot of hours. That's eight, eight solid hours in week one.
So, you, you're saying the fourth, you're from eight to noon?
To noon, yeah.
Eight to noon?
Nine to one, you know, nine to one, somehow.
I say the May one one is the outside agency presentation.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So, that's all that'd be, so that'd be six till.
May one, then two and four for six to eight.
All right, well, then the third, have a six P M meeting on Tuesday and Wednesday night, if you want to.
So, that's three nights in a row that week.
I'm just saying, that's okay with me.
Let's, let's do two of them and then see what we have to do from there.
We can do Saturday.
What, we need an all day on a Saturday, we can probably get everybody in on that.
Okay.
So, let's, let's plan on two, two hour ones.
Six. Not the sixth, I'll be out at ten.
Well, we don't have to meet on the sixth if we've already had four hours.
I wouldn't like you to be involved, but I think you need, if you get. This is gonna be preliminary stuff anyway, the first few days, I think.
So, you got the first week figured out?
Okay, so we're gonna meet May the first, six o'clock, and outside agencies only. Then we'll start Tuesday, second at six o'clock. And then we will meet the fourth, eight to twelve?
Pick a time.
That's fine.
Four hours, eight to twelve, one to.
Twelve?
Eight to twelve or one, something.
Is that at nine? We probably more.
Eight to twelve works good on the fourth.
Okay.
We good.
So, from there to.
We'll decide. We have to have an all day, or a half day.
I'm just gonna say, if we're gonna have an all day and we wait until the fourth to decide, it may be very difficult for me to take off work all day.
Yeah, well, I mean.
I mean, I need to, if we're gonna do an all day meeting, I need to know that.
We shouldn't need an all day if we've already spent eight hours.
Why, what if you did a placeholder for one?
Well, that, that would be fun, but I, I need.
A placeholder.
Okay, okay. A dummy date. Is that the same as a dummy date?
So, May thirteen, what is Saturday?
It'd be, it'd be the thirteenth of May.
May thirteen, older.
Saturday.
Do you want?
You be back? Or you gonna be on vacation?
No, I was just, that weekend I'll be gone.
Okay.
That, the six, six is then.
All right, let's just do the thirteenth. Can we do the thirteenth, y'all?
Now, I can do the eighth and the ninth, if you wanna do the eighth and the ninth. I mean, I'm, I don't believe, I travel out of town on the tenth and eleventh, so.
The ninth is a regular meeting.
Okay, so the ninth.
Which is the eight?
Five thirteen.
So, you can do two hours on the eighth, I can be there if you wanna do that.
We'll put a dummy date down for five thirteen.
I, I mean, you could also do what you wanna do. I'm just making a suggestion. Since the meeting's the ninth already, could you block off the afternoon before and just come early?
Sure.
As a placeholder?
Sure. Yeah, we can do a three o'clock or something till.
On the ninth?
Yep.
Three o'clock.
It's gonna be a long meeting if we, if, well.
Yeah, that, that does make.
On the before of the meeting.
Right.
I mean, that.
Get a three to five and then take an hour break. It's up to you.
I can do the thirteenth. I mean, I'm just throwing that out.
Yeah, I mean, it is.
I'd rather do two hours Monday night, the eighth, and then.
Yeah, I'd judge it, yeah. God, I loved it. Okay, so we're going, we're going to do Monday now.
Tend to Monday.
To Monday.
And then the thirteenth is needed.
Well, somebody just needs to call.
And then the thirteenth is Saturday, so if that's needed, we schedule a long day on Saturday. Starting early in the morning with donuts.
So, okay, so here's what I have so far, we'll see for, as, as far as dates and times. Monday, the first, the sixth, it's six. Tuesday, the second, it's six. Thursday, the fourth, from eight to twelve. Monday, the eighth, it's six. Okay, and, and Monday, the first, we're gonna deal with outside agencies. And then I guess assume the second, the fourth and the eighth, we'll, we'll get into looking at departments.
And that's gonna be only eight, it's gonna be three till, or, or six.
Six.
Six, and, and so, so there's six to what, eight?
Six to eight. Eight, we need to, six to eight.
So, that's two, two, that's, that's eight hours of looking at departments.
I'm excited about getting in this budget discussion after we can't decide on, we have to figure out.
But you don't, yeah, I mean.
Do you, do you want me to, I would assume you want me to invite constitutionals and Department of Social Services? And those aren't departments of the city. Uh, is it, do you wanna target those for nights in particular? Or how do you wanna do that?
Most of the constitutionals, we have a portion of the salaries that we're paying because it's beyond what is required, beyond what is required.
Yeah, or they, or they may ask, or they may ask for things from local funding that, that.
We pay a majority of the fringe for the constitutional offices.
Majority of the fringe?
Correct. There, and then there is some additional salary that is paid by the city.
But is that for every department, every constitutional office, or just a few?
No, the fringe is for everyone.
And salaries, we pay some of the salaries for all?
Um.
It doesn't matter.
If we authorize extra employees, yeah.
What are we doing the week of the fifteenth?
I don't know. What do you, what's the, what's the pleasure?
It's wide open. Pick a night, pick a day, the week of the fifteenth.
Just let me know.
Couple more meetings, just to have in the placeholder.
We have to do it now?
So.
I, I would, I would rather, well, I would rather schedule them, schedule a meeting that we may, may not need just to put it on my calendar so something doesn't come, come up.
Put three or four choices down here and wrap them up and pull a couple of things and it'll be, that'll be easier on everybody, just pull them out of a hat.
I would remind you that, uh, to have that public hearing on the twenty-third, ideally, you know, by May eleventh, we have a good handle on what you all wanna present at the public hearing.
Absolutely.
Um, so that's.
Fifteenth is kind of a deadline.
What we're doing is great, having all these meetings up front, cause that's what we need to do. We need to work, work through this.
You wanna do the fifteenth, let it go with that, just leave the fifteenth, seven, seven.
Now, we have to have everything decided by the fifteenth, so they have time.
Let's back to May thirteenth, again, the Saturday.
All right.
That makes sense.
Yeah, that's fine.
We can put it as placeholder.
We had it as a placeholder, so. Five thirteen, Saturday, four, five hours scheduled from nine in the morning to one, nine to one or something, nine to two. Nine to one. Nine to one.
Nine to one on the thirteenth.
Okay.
That sound okay to Mr. Hartman?
Hmm?
Okay, good. That was easy.
Okay, and then I guess if, well, as we get into this, probably by about the fourth, we'll, we'll see if we're making progress. And that would give us some dates. You know, we could do some things in the evening there, uh, that week of the fifteenth or, or some afternoon. I mean, I guess my, my point is, is as long as we're not doing an all day thing, and I don't mind to do all day. I just need to know definitely an all day now, and, and, yeah.
I've got to.
Yeah, they like it when I work. Okay, so, um, to make sure that, that we all have this right, on May the first, we will have outside agencies from s- at six o'clock. On May the second, we will meet from six until eight or thereabouts. And, you know, we won't go much past eight, but what, if there's somebody pres- a department presenting, we'll let them finish. Um, Thursday, the fourth, we'll start at eight in the morning and meet till noon. Uh, on May the eighth, we will, that's a Monday, we will meet again from six to eight. And we will schedule Saturday, May the thirteenth from nine to one. And that should give us two for twelve hours of meetings.
That's enough.
That's a big one.
Not counting the outside agencies, so, uh, I would probably suggest, how many, Ms. Crowder? Constitutional, sheriff, clerk of the court, treasurer, commissioner of revenue?
Commonwealth attorney.
Commonwealth attorney, so that's fine.
Right, five constitutionals, uh, Department of Social Services, library, uh.
Could all of that be done in a two hour period?
Depends on how many questions you had.
Well, I was gonna say maybe, uh, one, like, May the eighth, that one of those evenings, to have them come. Cause that would let us get into the departments and then we can see there and then if, if we need that Saturday, we'd know. I mean, just so, so you can let them know and, and they can schedule.
I think it's important, my suggestion would be, as we give you all the information and you start to go through it and you have questions, you know, reach out to me, please. Uh, because if we wait and try to do all the department given formal presentations and the constitutionals and outside agencies, we're not gonna get a lot of discussion done about the budget and the building a consensus on the budget. And so, uh, you know, I'm happy to have whoever come, but I guess my, if you, if you all looked at a section and you particularly didn't have comments or questions on it, uh, do we? uh, do we need that, those people to come? Are, are they providing the benefit?
That's what I was gonna suggest. I mean, if the CFO can give us, uh, all the financials by the twenty-eighth, so we got several days before the first meeting to look over it, we should be in that first meeting able to say, you know, these three constitutional officers need to be at the next meeting cause we got deeper questions, I think we could figure that out.
Yeah, well, and, and, and I think one of the good things of, of having the locality comparisons is, is we've had a lot of these departments come and we've been able to understand what they do and stuff. So when they do come, they don't need to go back through all of, here's everything we do.
Right.
So that, that should shorten that a little bit. Okay, so with that, we have the first, the second, the fourth, the eighth, and the thirteenth. And as we get into this, maybe in the fourth or the eighth, once we've met two or three times, we can see where we're at if we think we might need to schedule something that week of the fifteenth. I think that leaves us open then, um, should we feel we need to schedule that. Okay.
That was easy enough.
Pardon cats.
I think that could've been on the consignment agenda.
Okay, next item matters to be presented by members of the public, non-agenda items. Uh, Mr. Pollard, I think you are the only one that signed up.
I had also signed up under that last item. Um, not so much for the discussion that y'all were having, but to provide something for, uh, discussion as we get more into the budget process. And, uh, my name is Michael Pollard, I live at one oh one Ashley Drive for the record.
Thank you.
There's a copy of some, uh, cost reduction recommendations. Um, I've got one copy for each of the council members and a couple of extra for the city staff. Um, some of these may look like they're, uh, they could be expenses, but I expect that there's probably state or federal funding available for those. And they will help reduce potential costs. For example, uh, I have on here a recommendation, and I got this from someone who works with law enforcement. He was recommending, uh, that, uh, we, uh, if we don't already have them in place, and we could already have some of these in place, and I would hope that we do. He was recommending that we have installed front, rear, and backseat vehicle cameras and body cameras for all law enforcement. Uh, that would help not only reduce potential lawsuits, but also, uh, reduce costs with, with a lot of the cases in court so that we can reduce costs there. Uh, it can also reduce the time required to pursue some of these cases, so we can reduce costs there. Uh, one item that I didn't specify, but it should be fairly obvious. Uh, one of the recommendations is for a re-entry program for released inmates, and that is to reduce recidivism. Uh, if you have any questions concerning those, feel free to ask, but I didn't wanna take too much time at this point. This is, uh, some ideas to reduce city expenses. Thank you.
Appreciate that, Mr. Pollard. And, you know, I will note, except for that one meeting on Thursday, these are all in the evenings and, and, uh, they'll be recorded as well. So hopefully, the public will pay attention as, as this unfolds and, and see what's being discussed and, and share, uh, their comments with us, uh, throughout the process. I mean, individually, but then they'll have the public hearing on the twenty-third definitely, uh, for us to get feedback. All right, anyone else, uh, like to comment, didn't sign up? Okay, um, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to section two point two to that dash three, seven, one, one, point eight five, Code of Virginia nineteen fifty as amended. Discussion concerning a prospective business or industry or the expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of this business or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community, unannounced business. And, uh, along with the motion to allow the, uh, prospective, um, developers to enter into executive session with us.
So moved.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion by, uh, Vice Mayor Hubbard, second by Councilman Wingard. Clerk, color roll.
Fleaner?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes. And by roll call vote, council members will discuss only business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and specified in the motion to convene the executive session we're discussing. Clerk, please color roll.
Fleaner?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes. All right, with that, meeting's adjourned.